Um, that was a fun 2 minutes of me talking to myself. So, I'm trying to get this stream working in a way that doesn't, you know, crash every 5 minutes, or have dropped frames or any of that, so... I'm attempting to stream onto Restream, and then I'm also streaming to, from Restream, I'm going to Twitch, YouTube, and Mixer. So, just set up Mixer, gonna try that out, thought it might be fun. And, uh, yeah, we'll just sort of, you know, see how it goes. But the, um... Yeah, the other announcement is I've got a special bonus table set up on PP Poker. So if you guys are on the club, there's a, uh, there's a bonus table, uh, going. So be sure to check that out. Yeah, I'm not sure why I just called that, that was dumb. I mean, I, this just has to be a call, even though this guy doesn't seem to bluff very often. So, yeah, we'll see, I'm gonna kind of hold off on talking too much until I actually see that the stream's live, so I apologize that there's a little bit of a delay and we're starting a little bit late, but... I had the, I guess I had the wrong stream key in, and, and so... Yeah, we're, we're trying a new setup, I also reduced all of my, um, you know, display settings, so let me know if the stream, you know, looks terrible, or if it looks okay, if you can follow the action. I dropped the framerate down, I dropped the bitrate down, I tried to drop everything down so that we, you know, can kind of get to the bottom of this. It looked like my connection to all of the Twitch servers was really bad. So now I'm trying, you know, to see if I can connect to the Restream server, which I think is a little bit, you know, closer, it looked like I was getting a decent connection to Restream. So we'll check that out, you know, see if that works, and, uh, yeah, go from there. Fun 2 minutes of me talking to myself. Alright, looks like we are... Live. And, yeah, let's just see how the quality looks. So we are up and running on Restream, or Mixer, Mixer for the first time. That's kind of cool, again, no... Things look good so far, we are also, I'm guessing, live on Twitch, Twitch is live, cool. Uh, so that's going, and then YouTube, I'm over on Rounder University, let me just refresh and see if it shows that we are live on Rounder University on YouTube. And yep, it's live now. So let's go ahead and check that out, we've already got 2 likes on our video, that's pretty cool. Thanks guys for those likes, appreciate it. And, yeah, alright, so let's get our, let's get our session rolling here. And again, uh, so what I was announcing when, before the stream started, because it didn't work, and, uh, didn't start, was that I... Am, uh, I've got a bonus game going on the club, so it's a 60 no limit game, and anybody, whoa, whoa, what is this, what is going on? Oh my god, my, like, chat window is just, like, flashing all crazy. The, um... Hmm. Nope. Not very good. Yeah, there's a, a bonus... Bonus going on the club. So, if you play 60 no limit, you get 200 hands in, you get an extra 10 bucks, which is pretty good for 60 no limit. And, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll see how things progress, I'm trying to see if this, um, the Restream will connect. Uh-oh. What, what is this? Skipped frames detected. That's weird, it didn't drop frames, it skipped frames, that's, that's different. Lower your encoder settings, ensure you don't have any, uh, heavy CPU, I mean... Any other heavy CPU programs, enable performance mode in the Editor Context menu. What is the Editor Context menu? Anyone, anyone know what the Editor Context men, Context, Context menu is? The only thing I can think is that... I have, like, a couple browsers open, right, that could be, that could be part of it. But yeah, it's not, it's not showing my chat is connected to... Restream, let me, um... Or Mixer, I keep saying Mix, I keep saying Restream, I mean Mixer, it's not connected to Mixer. Alright, now it's connected. So, I should be able to say, "Hey, everyone..." And that should go to, like, everything. The only problem is I think it'll, like, pop up with multiple copies in the, um... Um, I guess we just call here, right, like, got some pretty good overcards. Maybe it was some showdown value, and then we can fold, I mean, we got a free card, basically. So yeah, we've chatted to Mixer, we've chatted to YouTube, and we've chatted to Twitch. But we'll just have to, we'll just have to see how things go. Um, okay, that is... Now, I set the... I set the, the bonus game to start at 3 players, just so that, you know, people don't necessarily have to play heads up, but it looks like maybe that was a mistake. I can go ahead and just start it. Oh, whoops. I got that message a little late. What are all these pictures? Oh. Those are little icons, gotcha. Alright, well, we are up and running, we've got a... I set the bitrate at, like, 1500. We have a few dropped frames, but it looks okay overall, I, yeah, I just, I don't know exactly why things were quite so unstable as they were, but, they were. Um, 5, 6, 7, 8, yeah, I mean, it doesn't look like a call, I'm just gonna fold. We'll see how hard the Mixer scene is to break into, so maybe if you guys are, uh, you know, you guys feel like it, you can jump in and, and check out the, uh, the Mixer video, see what that's all about, actually, it looks like they have some really cool features, it might be, you know, might be a less crowded space, especially for poker, I don't know how many actual poker, um... I don't know how many poker streamers are actually on Mixer, so, who knows, could be, could be good, or it, uh, might not matter. Tough, tough to tell. And, uh, thanks, Nifane. Appreciate it. So I'm gonna have to slow down this bot, it's going kind of off the rails a little bit, not, not my intent for it to, uh, for it to do that, so I will have to, you know... See if I can get it, get it under, under control a little bit here in the future, but, um... Yeah, in the meantime, we'll just sort of keep doing what we're doing, by the way, my Mixer, um, here, I'll put it in the chat, if you guys want, you can check out the Mixer. But if not, no worries. There's probably a call. What's wrong with Mixer? Looks pretty cool to me, like, I, I saw one guy's stream, like, it had all these cool little overlay things that looked like there were a bunch of little, like, buttons you could press that, you know, do, like, shoutouts and things for, you know, oh, I don't know, all sorts of cool stuff. Whoa, we got 5 people on the table already. Heck yeah. Alright. Only 1 seat open. Ah, darn it, trying to get... Trying to get a screenshot, so... Get the, the info out. Cool, cool. Nice. And that's how U-Rounders Club has 60 no limit running in the mornings. At, uh, you know, 10:25 AM, on a Thursday. Not too bad, not too bad, pretty happy about that. Well, we definitely got off to a slow start today, which, you know, it happens, I was getting all this setup stuff done. Again, it does look like we're still dropping a few frames here and there, I don't, I don't know exactly what else I can do to try and prevent that, um, you know, it's one of those, like, you know, it, it is what it is, uh... But... First, you know... Twitch will, you know, generally have the largest, uh, following, and then, um, Mixer... Still, still looks like 0, I don't know how it's 0 if I'm watching, does it not count yourself? Like, it won't let you count yourself as watching? So still struggling a little bit on the Mixer, uh, viewership, but, we'll get there, we'll get there. Yeah, I think people are gonna be a little bit more comfortable with a 60 no limit game on the club, um, for, you know, bonus purposes than the 200 no limit, I think a lot of player were playing, like, players were playing very nitty on the 2, the, the 200 no limit, which... Doesn't make for a very fun game, so I think by having a, uh, a 60 no limit, that, that should run a little bit, uh, better. And still getting 10 bucks, you know, if you can do, you know, if you can get 10 bucks free just to play, right? It's better than, better than nothing. So there's 1 seat left on the table, somebody wants to jump in, um, I'm not gonna sit, but it is tempting. So at some point, I will... Um, you know, change some of the, uh, the stuff around, so yeah, I got, you know, another, another little... Thing of skipped frames detected, again, like, it's saying... Uh, lower the encoder, so what I, the other thing I could try is, like, the auto, like, the auto encoder settings, to see if that helps. Um, also, let me know, guys, if you're actually detecting any sort of issues, right? Like, are, are you guys actually seeing any issues, or does it, does it seem okay, because... Right, like, a, a, you know, a few hundred skipped frames here or there, maybe it doesn't actually show up to the end user as being, as being all that much of an issue. Um, and again, we're at 0.7% dropped frames compared to, you know, yesterday, we were at, like, like, 40%, so... It does make a big difference. Um... Yeah, I don't know what the Editor Context menu is, so I'll have to figure that out, and then... Uh... Yeah, figure out what the Editor Context menu is, and then maybe I can try, maybe tomorrow, I'll try, like, the auto, you know, where, where it will just let you kind of auto pick... Um... Yeah, there's like an optimize setting, right, where you could potentially, um, let, let OBS optimize based on, based on what you actually need, so again, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how that would work, but... Might be worth, uh, looking into. But, we'll focus on the poker now for a little bit, now that we've got all that going. Um, I think that was good to get, get up and running, and I'll continue to try to improve the stream, again, I just... It, it, it seems that I just don't have the same... Uh, you know, the same level of... Bandwidth and, and internet connection strength, basically, that I, that I had at my old house, so, I, I may call up, maybe this weekend, I'll call up my internet provider, and I ran a few tests that do show how the internet's not, the stability is not quite as great running to certain servers, so when I run a, a standard speed test, everything looks pretty good, but when I actually look at, you know, the, the connection and speed going to various servers, it's not, not quite as strong. Um... Here. Looks good to me. Hmm, why does it say I'm offline? Hmm, let's go with, like, 3.5, we'll do a little overbet here, we got pretty smooth blockers. Uh, okay. Wow. That's interesting. I, I don't think I've been called on overbets with ace high, yet, I think that's a new one. There we go. Nice hand. Ah, pretty sure I wouldn't have necessarily gotten away from that one either if I were him, but, oh well. Yeah, the other clubs are not great about, uh, getting in on the morning games. I think they're, well, I, one of the guys is in New York, so he's east coast, but the other guys are all west coast. Yeah, yeah, I wasn't, wasn't necessarily predicting a ace high call there, but, it's, um, you know... What can you do? Yeah, we have not been having very much success at 50 no limit so far, and I feel like, but I, I've also not been putting in tons of volume, uh, part of that's just 'cause, you know, I got a little frustrated the other day, but, um... Uh, just, you know, from, like, not, not running great, but, uh... I also have been just working on some other, some other projects and things lately. The limping button strategy is interesting, it's definitely like something that, you know, people are doing, the button limp strategy. Um, I don't know, probably not supposed to fold, he's making this raise so, so large that I guess I'm gonna fold the gutter, but... It's definitely like, I mean, you have to study it, I haven't, so I'm not gonna use it, and I think generally speaking, people are just overfolding, so, I could understand it at higher stakes where players are playing better... versus like, you know, small blind opens, but it doesn't really make a ton of sense to me to do the button limp when your opponents are already overfolding a lot. The heck was that? There's not supposed to be anybody home. What, um... So like what, 30 big blind? No, if it, like, 30, yeah. No, it's more than that, right? How many big blinds, what was that? That was like a $30 jam, so like 60 big blinds. Not much of a, uh, hand to defend with here. I don't think we should bet when it's, um, that's actually a pretty good turn. Although probably just gonna end up costing us money unless we turn whatever we're doing here into a bluff. We'll have to ba- basically barrel like almost any river as well. Ooh, that was a good blocker. Yeah, he can't fold that. I think you're overthinking it, Nightvein, like the guy is just a fish, alright, I mean, let's not over, let's not overthink it. I, I really don't think it's some like deep thinking guy who's just, you know, like super, super attuned to the fact that he has the nut blocker and like playing a super balanced, uh, super balanced strategy. Like, just doesn't, doesn't seem like the thing he's doing. Where'd I get the global hat? Um, by winning a tournament. Alright, so note to self, I need to up the minimum, the minimum buy-in. So that, uh, people don't just buy in with 12 bucks and sit there with $12 the entire, the entire time. 10k or, I mean, I've paid well over 30 or 40,000 in rake. I mean, yeah, I'm sure they would send you a hat though, you could probably get a re- yeah, I mean, yeah, you could probably get a hat. Maybe, I don't know, they say they're exclusive only, like they're, they're, they're... They actually advertise them as basically like exclusive only items, so... Maybe, but that would be, that, they would have to then change their entire marketing of the, of the MTT stuff, right? So, they might, but, you know, they might not. Well, we got a full, full 60 no limit table running on the club, so that's nice. But yeah, like I said, I gotta change the, uh, I gotta change the min buy-in so that it's a little bit more, um... Yeah, I, I should have thought of that, like, I really, I, I thought of it, but then I didn't. Yeah, I should have, should have paid more attention to that and, and set the min buy-in at least at 50 bu- big blinds, that way people aren't buying in with 12 bucks and just kind of folding for an hour. That's a good card, I hope. Um, what's, what is this, like four? Something like that. I mean, it kind of is, I think you could factor it into your expenses, right? I hope this guy doesn't have 10 jack. Oh man, he loves those sixes! Wow! That was not what I was expecting. Ah, I think we can, right, I mean, seems like a good three bet. Yeah, I've been three loading a lot today and seems like a reg that might fold. Hmm, got a pretty good flop though. Think we'll go half pot on this one. It's fine, it's not like we actually had like tons and tons of equity there. Obviously a good hand, but not, you know? Not the stone cold nuts or anything like that. Pretty good turn. I mean, this is what kept happening to me yesterday, right, like I, I, or not yesterday, but last time I played, I bas- basically like kept running into turn sets. I don't know what to do here, it seems like I kinda wanna like make a raise, but not a huge raise because I don't wanna blow anyone out of the pot. And I also don't want to let him check back the river, so I either call and donk river or raise and jam river. And hope that he doesn't fold a flush. Damn it. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, that, that river, he probably checks back with whatever hand he just folded anyway, so... I don't know, maybe we got a little bit of extra money, maybe not, hard to tell. Definitely, I mean, not, not madly in love with the play, but don't hate it either. Yeah, I mean, to be totally honest, like, I haven't done that much with it either. Uh, I mean, like the years that I've played, I haven't, you know, my overall hasn't been that high, um... Like even last year, I was probably under, I, I don't even know. I don't know, it all depends, cause like I mix it with work and then there's like write-offs and expenses, so yeah, it's probably something I should do. Was it really? No, that's not you. I don't believe you. So on, if we got a mixer, like what, is there a poker channel? Go to Mixer and see if anybody is actually even looking for poker on Mixer. That could be part of the problem. Games. Yeah, I mean poker's definitely not even, you know, one of the games that is anywhere. We should bet the, uh, top set. I don't know what, I mean, 20 people watching Warfront, there's definitely just not as many people on this. I don't love that card, that just connected all the fucking straights. Terrible card. Poker. Let's get a board pair here. I mean, was there any, it was all, it was a double gut, like nine jack was a double gutter here. I, I mean, it's three-handed, right, like folding top set, here's the question, does he do this with a worse set, like? I mean, this probably can't be a fold, even though he always has jack nine. It's just, right, like, he could, he could be doing this easily with a set of eights, right? I mean, cause I'm capped, like I cap my range, we lose, but because he could technically have worse, I don't know, this sucks, he has jack nine. Oh wow! Man. Ooh, glad I didn't fold. He definitely had worse hands, so maybe nut peddler's not the right tag on this guy. Nut peddler might just be the wrong tag. I thought, I thought... Thought wrong, I, I thought wrong. So poker, this is the, okay, so yeah, I'm just the only one here, poker doesn't even have an avatar on this place. So it's, um... Yeah, it's gonna be hard for people to find my, my channel if there is no, if there is no poker even category, right, if there's no poker category, then obviously it's going to be hard for people to find my, uh, my channel on Mixer, so maybe I could write to them and ask them if they would be maybe interested in like putting an image on the poker category. Since I'm in on, on Twitch, it's like a pretty big category, right, I mean? It, uh, you know, like a real thing on Twitch. Tempted to do like the one-third here on the turn, but, uh, I think we'll just check and see what happens. I probably would evaluate bet the river, but that's just me. Alright, let me see if we can get on a, uh, a little bit more full table, might have a little more action. Nice, got... Still, still a nice full six-handed table. It's pretty cool. Ah, excuse me. Oh my god. Hmm, I'm not sure I really wanna sit at that table. We are pretty deep, but we're out of position. We're getting better than two to one, I don't know. Fine, fold eights. Tens are probably a bit closer. Alright, let's get off that table. Yes, fine. Not ideal, but it'll work. Yeah, the, uh, yeah, it's interesting, you can get, like, you know, just based on small samples, you end up getting, uh, fairly inaccurate reads on people sometimes. Nice value bet. Not too bad. Got a seat open on the sixty no limit table on the club, if anyone's trying to get in on that. By the way, did anybody, anyone know if they went back, PP Poker, I think, went back to allowing five tables? Is that true? A little annoying because, like, a month ago, I was like bugging their support every day about it. How like, they basically went from allowing people to play on five accounts to not allowing it. And so people were just like, "Well, now I can't play on all my accounts." And I was like, "You guys needed to announce something about this, or like tell people how to deal with it," or, or something. Like, you can't just go from letting people play on five tables with five accounts, to not letting them do it, and not say a word about it. And they were like, "Oh, well, we just did it." And I was like, "Yeah, no, I know, I get it." And they just kept explaining to me how it worked. They just kept repeating like, "Well, now you can only play on three accounts." And I was like, "Yes, I understand that." Like, they just didn't get it. It was, it was a very frustrating few days where I like was really trying to cut. I lost like five or six different players that were like, "Well, I wanna be able to play on more tables than three, so I'm just gonna stop playing." So I lost like a whole bunch of players, and it was kind of a mess. And I kept contacting them and trying to explain to them that this was not a very good way to do things. And, uh, yeah, they just didn't, didn't seem to get it. They like had no, no real concept of why this would bother people, or why it was not a good way to do business. They, they just kept explaining that you couldn't be on more than three accounts. So, not the best PR move. At some point, we'll have to make our own app. That'll be the, uh, the long-term goal. Is I'll have to, I'll have to get my own PP Poker-type interface that's, you know, maybe both mobile and web-based, where you can play and create clubs and all that stuff. And, um, have a couple like clubs run by the app, or, you know, something. I don't know, we'll figure it out. But down the road, maybe next year. What is going on? Like this, like, I don't know if you guys can see the light on my face or anything, or in the background, but... Can I? Yeah, I don't know how to, how to respond to people specifically. Alright, looks like we're one hour into the session-ish. See if this guy wants to keep playing hands with me if he's done, if he's had enough. Oh, no sixes this hand, huh? Where are your sixes, man? Yikes. So tomorrow, maybe I'll do a PLO game. I'll do like a, maybe a... Tomorrow, I'll do like a sixty PLO game. Tomorrow's Friday. And then Saturday and Sunday, I'll do, um, like hundred no limit, maybe PLO one day, and no limit hold'em the other day. That way, you know, multiple people can get in on the bonus. I mean, I'm always trying to push no limit hold'em cuz that's what I play, but to be totally honest, more players are playing pot limit Omaha on the club than no limit hold'em. Like, it's just much more popular. So this is like, obviously, it looks like a block bet, but like, how much value can I get with top pair here? Like, I, you know, I wouldn't necessarily even demand myself getting a value bet on the river on this board. So, I, to me, it doesn't make a ton of sense to make any kind of raise. I mean, a small min raise is like cool, but... Uh, fold, call, fold, sit in, there we go. Yeah, in fairness, my flips are going swimmingly today. And basically, that's all you need to have a good day of poker, is win a few flips. You win most of your flips in a day, like, you're gonna have a winning day. That was a pretty, uh, passive way to play. I mean, look at these tables, they're great. It's like Jeremiah and then a bunch of weaker players. Actually, that Johnson and Johnson player doesn't seem that weak, right? I mean, he seemed more like a reg. I'm not sure why he's marked green. This Dave guy is definitely not as, uh, nitfish as I thought. So, definitely a few misreads, like the, this guy might be more of a reg, this guy might be more of a, more of a just regular fish. And I, so what do we, I mean, we're pretty deep here. I mean, it's only, we're getting like, oh my gosh, we're getting like five to one? Like, we're getting really good odds there with ace three suited. Alright, three to, I don't know, I guess. Oh, I'm terrible at math. Like four to one, three one, four to one. Woo, that looks like a good hand. Yeah, I definitely need to up the min buy-in. The, um, the way the, the guys are playing on these, uh, bonus tables are like very different than they play on. I don't know why, right? Like, I get it, yeah, I'm giving away some free money on the table, but they just play like super different. Right, it's like they're, you know, I, I mean, these guys play normal, normal poker most of the time, but it seems like with the bonus and trying to make sure that they can play for 200 hands, they're like totally changing their game around. Ah, so yeah, I might do another, I was thinking about trying to do like three tables a day, of like three bonus tables a day, for, you know, a couple weeks, just to see how that does. Um, you know, keeps players active, keeps tables running, you know, gets, gets games actually like actively running on the club, which is good. What's going on, poker dad? How's it going? Yeah, this really doesn't... Doesn't let me... The, the little, um, the chat bot that I'm using, I mean, I have to call it the gutter. Actually, gutter and overs might be better raise than a, than a flat. Shouldn't, shouldn't be soft-playing against Jeremiah, I should just be raising. And he'll hopefully assume that I, um, hey, late Drake, thanks buddy. You missed the, uh, you missed the game this morning. You missed the bonus game. Uh, you bitch. You are, you are obviously going to call my bet. Oh, thank god. I thought for sure he was just trapping me there, cuz he knows that I have to bet my air on the river in that spot, so I figured he was trapping. And I was just donating money, but... Oh, there he is. Oh, no. Put up a, um... Yeah, nine eight off is actually a little on the light side. This looks like a casual player. Uh, four, five, six, seven, that's pretty good. Nothing, never mind. Don't worry about it. Oh, man. Yeah, the one thing I can't really do is, um, like, when they do an early bird special type thing in a casino or whatever, it's usually like you have to register by a certain point. But I don't, I don't know if I even have the data to see when somebody gets on the table. Like, uh, yeah, I mean, I can only see, yeah. I can't see when each individual person got on the table. I can only see when the table started and ended, I believe. So it doesn't, uh, I can't, I can't really do that. Oh, well. But man, oh man, we've got, I mean, it's an interesting thing. Like, we can actually see how many active players are on the club, which is a lot. Like, because already like 12 people have rotated through this, this one sixty NL game. Starting to get jealous of Jer. He, uh, gets a lot of, gets, I'm, I'm jealous of all the, uh, compliments he gets at the table. Nobody ever calls, nobody ever says that I'm a beast. Feels bad. Feels bad. Um, alright, blind versus blind, we just like call down, right? Eh, I'm gonna fall to the pot size. Uh, I might, I might. I, I would like to get a little bear trophy back there, I think that would be good. Um, yeah, I'd like to add a little bear trophy to the collection, but I just, I don't know, I don't have that many, you know, that much time. When uh, let's check the schedule here, check the grizzle game schedule. Um, what is today? Thursday, February 7th. Uh, yeah, I mean, they don't start till 7:30 PM. I mean, I'm, I'm, that's like bedtime for me, you know? They just, Saturday, I mean, again, in Saturday, maybe I'll play some after my son goes back to Virginia, like I might get in on some, that, that would make sense, but until he goes back, I'm not gonna play any. Um, at some point, like maybe, I don't know, like if the challenge is going really well, at some point, maybe I'll take a break and play a tournament series for a month? And just like go ham on that, and I don't know, just like play video games all day, and then play the grizzle games at night or something, but... I don't know, I just, it doesn't line up with my schedule very well. And uh, yeah, I mean, my number one thing is kind of like trying to keep a very uh, you know, good consistent schedule. One thing, oh, what's this? Live. Trying to figure out how this thing works. 6, oop, oop, let's do that, let's put it in there, and then we've got, what, 6, 7, 8, 10? I mean, it's a gutter, we have position, but he's like betting really big, and we don't have very good implied odds here. I don't know, it's a, it's a close one, right? So, I don't understand why some of this stuff isn't popping up. I gotta, I don't know, like work on my um, my Facebook game, but... 10, 10 on the river. 10 would've been pretty nice, huh? Would've, would've given him the straight and me the boat. Oh, man. Would be nice. Wasn't to be though. Yeah, ace, king, yeah, a wall. What can you do? Makes me think I could get a club running all on my own if uh, if I just used this promotion technique. Pretty good. Basically, all my players. Yeah, I'm not so sure this should be a triple. I don't think we have that much fold equity on that card. May, I mean, maybe we do, maybe we should just jam cuz we're never ahead, but... Seems... Seems like once he calls twice there and we don't get there, it's kind of a tough spot. Well, that, that depends who you ask. Not disagreeing, just... Uh, both. So, the reason I pot it personally is because I figured that um... The players who are not adjusting their ranges are going to be weaker, so a, a good player is going to... Right, like, like, okay, so like Jeremiah, he is not adjusting his raise size, so he's just min-raising against me, and I'm just gonna call 100%. So like, not that, I'm not saying it's wrong, but like, I mean, now Jeremiah and I get to play heads up like 100 times because I'm always calling. And now he gets to play heads up against me and a bunch of pots on the big blind, where he has positional advantage, which is fine, but... If he just, you know, raised more often, I would fold more often, and we could move on to the next hand where we're not, you know, playing reg versus reg. So, again, like, generally speaking, um... Now I have to raise because... It just seems obvious. But yeah, it's just, again, I would adjust, and I would say, sure, min-raise against players who are gonna be over-folding, but against like somebody like me, right? I would, I would raise a little bigger. That way, you're not playing as many pots against, against me as, you know, other players. Oh, love, like, people are like, hey, how do I deposit? I give them the information, and then they start like having random, like, oh, the game looks slow. Like, okay, I don't know. I don't know what to tell you about that. Get in there and, 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 and get, get it going, right? I mean, what, I don't... So yeah, that's the only thing, I mean, so what's Nightvein saying? Okay, so there's this data and stuff that was presented, I, I didn't dive into it much, but that's one of the takeaways. Uh, rake, bigger pots, don't get 3-bet as much, playing against some weaker players, obviously, just some other things. Also, people open too wide on button, as... I guess, and small blind needs to 3-bet more than it gets 3-bet. Where, where is that from though? Like, I mean, there's all this data that was presented, who, who presented it, right? Like, the source matters. Again, I'm not disagreeing at all, I'm just curious. Like, this has always kind of been like my theory, and again, my, I, like, I always kind of backed it up by having a pretty high win rate. Um, but like, you know, also, I, I, again, not that it's, it's definite, but Poker Snowy does pot it on the button. Poker Snowy uses a larger button size. Again, it's like the strongest position, so, you know, you want the bigger pot. And again, the, the, the reverse argument that you can go back and forth forever is that, well, a smaller stock-to-pot ratio lets me play, have more room post-flop, so I can outplay people. Um... And all that. So, and yeah, I mean, so, and then there's the other thing, right? Like, okay, so if people are actually over-folding, or if they're playing incorrectly as a pool, then other sizes might be better. So yeah, that's where like the black box stuff comes in. Again, that's all the stuff that we did in, in the CFP group when we looked at mass database analysis and looked at... How people were reacting to different, you know, various plays, blah, blah, blah. Gonna go up one here. And uh, yeah, that's that. Limp re-raise one time? Come on, come on. You know you wanna limp re-raise one time. Somebody watching the stream or timing out? Never quite know. Did I, why did I check this back? Jeez. Yeah. Pretty bad card. Oh, what else? Um... It's pretty easy for him to have other like 2 pairs and stuff. I mean, yeah, if he has nines or fives, like whatever, but for the most part, he can have like a bunch of other stuff. Well, I have to say, it seems like, like uh Mixer is not a super strong platform for uh... It's an unfortunate river. This is after Jeremiah told me he's running kind of bad today. Could fold. Good fold. Have to call that, just because we got the hard outs. And, I mean, I don't really know how this guy's playing, but I don't think we need to call this. Heyo! Got a Bits donation, thank you! Thank you, oh man, I don't, do I have my stream? Hold on. Stream labels, I don't think I have my stream labels turned on. So, I don't get the little, little overlay pop-up for those. I'll replay it, that way we get it. Thank you, appreciate that. Leo... Yalas? Much appreciated. Um... Yeah, I don't really wanna like let that get a free card. I'm just gonna raise. Oops. Alright. Well, having a pretty good session today, I mean, not running great, but, or, uh, running pretty good. Yeah. Hmm, new free game, Apex Legends? No, haven't, haven't seen it. No, not yet. What is Apex Legends, guys? What's the deal? Be nice to have a, um, a winning day, get back, back to a new, uh, a new challenge. A new high for the challenge would be good. We'll see how it goes. Um, yeah, I mean, these guys are both pretty, well, I thought they were pretty tight, but like I said, I may... Yeah, I just, I like, people wanna like chat, like, I, I, again, not trying to be like rude or, or mean or anything, but like people wanna like chat and like talk about, I, I don't know, like the clubs and stuff, and it's just like, look, you, like... You gotta either wanna play or you don't, but like telling me like, "Oh, the games are slow, there's only one game running." It's like, oh, okay, right, like, I'm not, you know... Yeah, I know. There's a 60 no limit game running at, you know, 11:42 AM on the club. Like, that's pretty good to me, so, if that's, you know, that's not your cup of tea, then, then it's not the club for you. It's a new club, still getting going, so that's, that's how it is. But I just, I don't have time to like chat about, like, the current situation. I'm not sure what people want me to say even. Maybe I sound a little... May, maybe I sound a little, uh, a little irritated, but it's just like one of those things where like people are telling me things that I already know, and they're, I don't know what they're expecting me to say, like, "Oh, like, yeah, I'll, I'll give you free money?" Like, I, I don't know what they want. But I'm pretty happy about having a 60 no limit game running. Yeah, maybe, we might do like one of these a week where we stream to multiple services. It also put a, you know, it'll keep a... It'll get a video up on YouTube every once in a while, which is cool, um, because, you know, that's always nice to do. Oh, okay, a Battle Royale game. I mean, it makes sense that more of those would come out, I guess there's a pretty popular one that, that happened. So, yeah, when the stream ends, like, I'm gonna kinda do these, these bonus games, like I said, every once in a while. So if you guys are in the club or wanna be on the club, I'm gonna try to run like three bonus games a day that will be, like, just really good value, right? So like 60 no limit, you know, you play for a couple hundred hands, you get a free $10, which is pretty good. It's like, I did the math, and it should be like over 100% rake on average. That, that's average. Some players, the way they play, they rake more, some they, they rake less, but I'm doing, I'm doing almost all of them so that they're like 100% or 100, like, like, basically, it's like a high estimate. And again, the goal is like, if the game runs, right? Like, even if some people drop out, or like, right, some people might jump in and wanna get the, um... You know, wanna get the bonus but not completed or whatever, and then the game runs longer and people are, you know... There's plenty of 60 no limit players on the, on the, um, club, right? So like, you know, the, the idea is like just to, to, to get that spark of interest into the game. And, um... And to do it. I don't know, man, I'm really enjoying Warframe. Warframe is pretty fun, but I could look into it, I can look into it. Ooh, if somebody wants to carry, I'm down for that. Yeah, if I can, if we can lock in a carry in some game... That would be great. I, yeah. If somebody can carry me in Hots, that would be great. Hots, some other game, yeah. Always looking for a good carry. That's the way to do it, you know? Hmm... Alright, let me, uh... So what is this? Late Drake wants some chips moved around. Late. Um... This guy... Hold on, hold on, I gotta... I don't wanna forget these numbers. Uh... 12.55. That's pretty good. That's pretty good. He only has, what, three outs? That's pretty good. Um... And done. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Kind of, kinda, kinda, kinda enjoying Warframe right now, which is a pretty awesome game. I also really like the company that makes Warframe. Digital Extremes, they're like a pretty cool company. Like third, you know, small, small company, they haven't been eaten by EA yet. A company that hasn't been ruined by Electronic Arts is always a good thing. I thought Titanfall, was it like Titan or Titanfall? There was some game that was just supposed to be like the new big thing. And there were two, there was like one that was like maybe Titan, and another one that was Titanfall. One was supposed to be like this like MMO, first-person, I don't know, I don't know what the hell they were, but I, I thought they were supposed to be pretty big games, and, and I don't, I don't know what happened to... Like, I know one or the other ended up like, you know, being kinda big for like a little bit of time, and then the other one I never really saw anything about. I don't know if it was cancelled or what happened, I don't really... To be honest, I don't keep track of these things too much. Alright, I'm just gonna fold this. Alright, well, I mean, we had 573 dropped frames this whole stream. How's the quality? Is, is the quality okay? Is it watchable? I mean, are you guys, are you guys good with this? Can I leave these settings? Maybe I'll try the auto settings tomorrow, see how that goes, and we'll kinda compare which is better, but... It looks like basically, the, the bottom line is I'm only getting like 2.5 meg's upload. I'm supposed to get up to 5. But, you know, they always say "up to", it's like, well, what is, like, what is the point of "up to"? Like, right, I mean, like, that doesn't... Obviously, I'm not paying for, you know... Like, right, like, if you advertise "up to this speed", like, obviously, that's the speed I want. Like, I'm not buying up to, you know, 5 megabit upload if I only want one, right? Like, that's, that's, like, kind of asinine advertising, so... I don't know, I may make, uh, I may make Elizabeth call the cable company, just so I don't like fly off the handle. But, I just know that it's gonna be so frustrating going through like all the steps of them like being like, "Go to, you know, their pers-" like, they'll have you go to their speed test website that's just like testing the speed between your computer and like their local server, and it'll be, you know, super fast. Then you have to explain to them like, "No, no, I'm actually looking for like the speed that I need to get to the actual internet, not just to your server down the road." So, unacceptable. Got a new member in the club, how are we doing on our club? So we got 159 members in the club right now, so I don't need to clean it out for a while. So Monday, maybe we'll do a little, little housekeeping, and, but I'm gonna try to keep the club at the 200, uh, the 200-member cap for a while, just 'cause it gets really expensive, the, the bigger you get, so... As long as I can have like players that are active within the last three weeks or so, that should be fine. And, uh, like I said, I mean, we're getting lots of... Eh... I don't really like accepting people that just have like the, the PP poker number. So if you guys are applying to the club and all you have is like the, the sort of automated number, um... Like, I don't know, I just, I have no idea who you are, I don't know where you're coming from, I don't know why you're applying. It's just a little weird. Not always as keen on letting those people in. Yeah. I mean, I, yeah, I wanna let people into the club, but sometimes those are just people that are like going to the tables and like, um, you know, advertising their own clubs, or stuff like that, right? Like, they're not always even people that are, that are trying to play in your club. Sometimes they're just people who wanna advertise their own club, right? It's a, it can be kind of annoying, so... At least I want a screen name that, or like some sort of explanation of like who you are, why you're here, that type of thing. That was a nice all-in, we won with Kings, this has been a good session. Nice little, uh, you know, nice little recovery for once. Uh... Alright, we'll go for another 15 minutes or so. Thank you guys for tuning into the stream, looks like we got decent, decent viewer numbers. And again, I'm, I'm sorry, I've been, I've been off my, my normal schedule a little bit, and, um... But it is what it is, I'm not, you know, I'm actually not that worried about it. We'll, uh, keep pushing. I got a new, a cool new thing today that I'll show you guys, uh, tomorrow on stream. It's, um, it's the Mastery Journal from John Lee Dumas, who, uh, I haven't actually watched any of his stuff in quite a while, but it's, um, he's, uh, Entrepreneur on Fire is his, uh, podcast, and he came out with the Freedom Journal, which I also used, which I thought was pretty cool. Um... And so yeah, we'll see. See if this guy checks an ace twice or not, I don't think so. Hey, there's somebody other than, there's an actual other club player in the game finally. It's good. So yeah, like I said, I'm gonna try to like do three of those promotions. It'll be, you know, one will be a PLO game, one, you know, it'll probably be two Hold'em games and a PLO game, and I'll try to make them all different limits as well. So again, depending on what limit you play, there will always be something there for you. I'll try to, you know, set up a schedule and... Um... Yeah, I'll set up some sort of, kind of a, a rotation or schedule, and I'll also maybe put out some polls on Facebook, on the, on the club's Facebook page. So if you guys aren't following the club on Facebook, make sure you do that. Uh, I should probably put a link to the club's Facebook page on all my, all my social media stuff. But you can also just message the club, there's a, a link to message the club, it's like the "Contact Me" button. And once you message the club, I don't know if that automatically makes you like like the club, or follow it, or whatever, but I, I gotta figure it out. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm new to the whole Facebook, social media stuff, but I'm accepting the fact that I probably need to get a little bit more into it. Anyway, the, uh, the plan is to, like I said, do some rotations of those. And, you know, if you're a 20 no limit player, occasionally there'll be a little bonus, you know, game for you, which obviously, if it's 20 no limit, there's basically no rake paid. So you won't be, um, you know, rolling in it on a 20 no limit bonus game, but maybe like for, you know, that, we'll do a five-card PLO bonus game that's 20 no limit. And then we will do a, you know, again, like a 40, you know, a no limit Hold'em that's 40 no limit, and then a no limit Hold'em that's, you know, 100 no limit or something. So that there's a few different, you know, few different options for people. Problem is that it's just like, the club isn't built right now for tons of 100 and 200 no limit games. There aren't that many players with bankrolls that are that big. So it's like players that are playing stakes that are above their bankroll just for the bonus. That's not really my intent. My intent is for people who play 60 no limit to be like, "Oh, cool, I can go play this 60 no limit game and get a little bonus money." Um... So that's, yeah, I mean, I, I, the intent isn't really to... You know, to go, to go crazy having players play over their bankroll. That's actually terrible for the club, right? Like, I don't want somebody that only has $100 on the club to go sit in a 100 no limit game and get busted, and then not wanna play anymore. Like, that's the worst thing. The player with $100 bankroll, I want playing 20 no limit, so that they can play for a long time and keep the club going and healthy and, and games, you know, games poppin'. Dude, this guy's overcalling 3-bets in the small blind. That's usually like pocket pairs. Um... Right, like, nines, tens, jacks, things like that. So if he has like the jacks with the heart, he'll probably call, otherwise I'd probably get the fold. So it seems like worthwhile to, um, bet there. Mm-hmm. The other thing I should've specified or been more careful to specify was that the, um... The, well, a couple things. 1, when I do these promotions, it's, uh, like the, the early bird or, you know, doing a promotion, it's usually like the first 6 players to sit the table, so... Uh, again, I'll need to figure out exactly how I track that or if I actually have to watch every single one. If I have to watch every single table just to figure that out, that'll be annoying, but I'll figure it out. Or I can just sort of do it for everybody that sits in place too. Honestly, like, whatever. I'll just probably do it for everybody that sits in place 200 hands. It's only 1 table, so if the table runs all day, then, you know, they're getting the bonus. You know, it's definitely a bonus for those 200 hands they played, but it's not like if they play like 500 hands on the table, then that's, you know, just a good table. Um, okay, call this. Uh, this guy is, uh, can't tell if he's actually getting the better of me or not, but... Uh, this is a big pot. Why is this so big? That doesn't matter. Barely standard play. We had a lot of outs. Could've gone, could've gone great, but it didn't. Wow. Ah, it's a tough one. That's a tough, tough break. I don't think the answer is jamming there. I think the answer is like hitting our hand and making him pay that way. Yikes. I am not sure the Discord. So Discord is, um, if you're on Twitch, it's right below the stream. There's a link to the Discord. But there is, uh, yeah, I don't have the restream set up with a Discord command right now. I'll, I'll fix that. Hold on, I'll just, I'll just do it right now. So if you go to Twitch... Twitch... And I've got like a perma, a perma Discord link that I will get. So again, the "Contact Me" is a good way to get like... Ahold of me these days. Trying some new stuff. What the heck is this? What is this weird tweet? Is this... Is that my like going live notification? I don't like that. Is that what like Twitch sends out when I'm... Hmm, gonna have to, gonna have to look at that. Anyway, copy link address. And we'll go into Settings. Bot. New action. Um... Shack Command. Discord. Yeah, I'm not sure if that's exactly what I want to do, but whatever. Anyway, here's the link. If you want it. Um, okay. Yeah, that was a bummer with that, um, that 3-bet. That, that Big Show 68 player is, um... Definitely doesn't appear that strong, but, you know, obviously hit a couple nice hands against us. Alright, it looks like we are at the 2-hour mark. Pretty close. I'll go for a couple more minutes. Ah, again, thank you guys for watching. Appreciate it. I know the last couple streams have been rough just due to technical issues, but we are, um... You know, we're cooking now and I think, I think the, the game should be in good shape. Or the stream should be in good shape, although now I just had like a few seconds ago, some, some frames. Yeah, I don't know if it, it must just be something about running... Yeah, I wonder if part of it is just simply running the actual like browser with the streams in the background and stuff. Um, like that could be a big part of it. Oof, this is gonna get expensive. I wish we had 2 hearts. That would obviously make our equity better. I think we just call this one, right? That's not, that's not great. I mean, yeah, we just... It's a big bet. Yeah, we have the pair plus the open-ender. Definitely close, let me see. We're getting like 3 to 1. But there's just not a lot of equity behind and the chances of him having a weak hand here. I mean, yeah, ace-king could double barrel, I guess, and we could be ahead of that, but more likely than not, he has like overpairs and such. Ah, I don't know, I guess we'll call. Ha, ha, after I just go into like explaining why it's important for us to fold. That's a good card. We'll see if he was bluffing if he jams ace-king here. Um... Alright, well, managed to win a big pot at least, so that's cool. Alright, I guess we'll, we'll play 1 more round here. We'll go, go, let the blinds go through 1 more time. Also, guys, don't forget, I am still giving away a TV, uh, on the, um... A TV for playing on my club this month and again, all those entries will count towards prizes in future months, so... Um, but before the end of the year, I plan to be giving away like thousand-dollar tablets and, and gift cards and stuff, so... I mean, you know... If you, uh, are on the fence about whether or not to play and you're not sure, I mean, that, that should kinda set you over the edge because I'm gonna be giving away like prizes worth, you know, $1,000 a month. Um, and the earlier that you start playing on the club, the more entries you'll have to winning those prizes. So it's kind of like, I'm trying to sort of simulate the whole splash the pot rake back, um... Method by, by doing like randomized stuff for, for one, like prizes that'll go, that can go to anybody. Uh, now, those prizes, like higher volume players will be more likely to win the prizes cuz every 1,000 hands you play is an entry ticket each month. However, the, you know, the bonus games, right, those go to anybody. So that's like another form of like rake back on my club is these bonus games where I give out like lots of bonus money just for playing, you know, 200 hands at the table. So that's kind of like the best method I could think of that the club allows for, just, you know, software-wise to, you know, simulate sort of a randomized approach to rake back that's a little bit like, in my opinion, a bit, a bit more interesting and more fun than just straight like rake back. And, uh, it also, because the club is small right now, I think it serves a much better purpose as far as getting the games rolling. And, I mean, so far, that's, that's actually worked really well, um, for getting the games going, so I think it, I think it makes sense. So basically, the way that works is you follow, you know, you join the Discord, you see when stuff's going on Discord, you follow the Facebook, you see when, you know, Facebook, Twitter. I mean, I'll probably end up posting it, you know, everywhere. You just have to be tuned into one of those areas to see when they go live, cuz I'm not always gonna be streaming it, I'm not always gonna be like, you know, sending people private messages, letting them know that it's going. Whoops, that was a c-bet. Just screwed that up pretty bad. Um, so I won't always be like, you know, taking a ton of time and effort to make sure people know that a promotion's going. It's just sort of gonna happen. That's a great card. I think we can just go like half-pot there. Cuz obviously that smashes our range and we accidentally timed out, so... Shouldn't be a problem. Yeah, don't love this situation. Um... Yeah, okay, I guess we give up and let him have a nice pot. Oh goodness. Oh boy. That was ugly. I'm not, I mean, I'm not sure that we, we take, I mean, I guess we double barrel and we're jamming the turn and maybe he folds there on the turn, but not with a pair plus, I think he was pair plus open-ended, right? Tough, tough break on the last hand, but overall, I think we finally had a nice like winning session at 50 no limit. So we ran good, I think we played fine. Nothing, I don't think we did anything too terrible, um... And I will be back here tomorrow morning at 10 a.m., guys. And yeah, if you guys have not checked out the club, I really encourage you to do that. Make sure you are following wherever you're watching, subscribing wherever you're watching. And, yeah, I will, uh, try to continue pushing out information about like different promotions I've got going on, but... If you are interested in basically like getting paid to play poker sessions, um, for the next, you know, probably the next month at least, I'll be running these bonus like promotion tables and, uh, getting games going at all hours of the day. So as this like table winds down, as people earn the bonus on that one, I will fire up like another bonus table, right? And I'll just put a tweet out or something that says like, "Hey, right now, there's a 40 no limit and you get this for playing on it." Right? So, or like, you know, I'll do a PLO table, right? Like you get, you know, I'll, I'll fire up a 40 PLO table and say, "Hey, here's the reward, you know, go nuts." And, um, yeah, and that'll be that. And I'll, I'll let that one run and, you know, it'll run for how long it runs and then if I see that that one dies out or, you know, whatnot, then I'll fire up another no limit one. And I'll probably, my goal is to do 3 per day. So if you're just kinda following my Twitter along and, you know, you're around, the idea is that like, instead of 1 person sitting here, 1 person sitting there, I can sort of motivate people to all sit at the same table. The game runs, and then when new players come into the club, they see games running, right? It might only be 1, but at least like there's always gonna be a game running so that they know the club is active, there are players and it's not, you know, it's not dead. Now, in the evening, there's usually 2 or 3 tables running now. So it won't be as much an evening thing. It'll be like morning, you know, midday and then afternoon. But in the evenings, I really won't need to do that very much. So that's just kinda what you can expect from that whole thing. Did I just accidentally sit another big blind? Darn it. Okay, well, um, let's see. That's gonna do it for today, guys. I'm gonna go grab some lunch and, uh, do a little bit of work and then I'll do another, uh, another afternoon session. But I am trying to get some work done on like social media, getting things set up and then, you know, keep your eye out. Uh, this game is wrapping up, uh, on the club, so I will be firing a 40 the next game. So just a little preview for you guys that are, uh, in the club, so you know it's coming. Uh, I'll have to pick an emoji to use as like the secret, you know, the secret bonus emoji cuz the other clubs aren't doing this, right? The other club players that are playing in these games don't get the bonuses. It's just for you rounders, clubs, club players. So if you're in the club and you're playing against the guys in the other clubs, they're not getting any bonus. They're just, they're just playing the game to play the game, which is great, you know, that's all fine and well. Um, so, yeah, I've gotta put like a little sort of symbol or something to indicate, "Hey, this is the bonus table" and then post about it on all my social media and in Discord and then you guys know where to go to get the bonus game. And then I have to like, you know, jot down like, "Okay, well, I'll kind of keep track of..." I'll see the, the games I create and the symbols and then that's at the end of the week. When I do my reconciliation, I'll just, you know, make sure that I know that. Uh, those, those funds are, you know, going where they need to go. Alright, hopefully that all makes sense. Uh, again, hope you guys are enjoying the stream. Hope you're enjoying the challenge. I think we took a nice step in the right direction today and hopefully today, tomorrow, uh, maybe even, maybe even a little bit of a morning or something on this weekend. Probably not, but tomorrow, hopefully we have another nice big day at 50 no limit and we can start setting some new highs for the profit challenge and keep, keep going skyward, you know?